Happy New Year to everybody. And welcome to our first meeting of January 10th, 2013, at the Longview City Council. Before we get started, Council, I know Mr. Manley has gotten beat up at times for not being able to make some of the meetings. Spoke to him today. He has an upper inflammatory condition, and with the flu and everything else that's going on, I ask him, please don't come up here, because we don't want to get infected. So, Richard, I'd like to add some motion to excuse Mr. Manley. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Richard. Okay. All right. Our first order of business tonight is going to be our pledge and our prayer. That will be led by Pastor Virginia Wall of Wesley McCabe United Methodist Church. Please stand.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council representatives. Happy New Year to each of you. Let us pray. Almighty God, in the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, we thank you for your grace and your mercy with us this evening. Lord, I invite your Holy Spirit into this place as we gather, God, to convene this meeting, oh God, for the business of the city of Longview. We acknowledge your guiding presence, oh God, in spirit, in the hearts of our mayor and the city representatives. God, we thank you for their willingness to serve, oh God, and we ask that you bless them and grant them wisdom, knowledge, and a discerning spirit to respond to the issues presented here in this place. We ask that you guide the discussions and resolutions to benefit the best interests of the citizens of this great city of Longview. Grant us all your spirit of peace in this time together, unity of spirit, God, and allow us to glorify you in Jesus' name with thanksgiving. Amen. Please join me with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, sir.
And happy New Year to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we get into citizen comment, also, I'd like to send condolences from the Council and from the city to former Mayor Lou Galasey, especially his family at this difficult time. Mayor Galasey was a trendsetter, all the way down to the way he dressed, and was always very helpful to us. I think about every Monday morning, he stopped here at City Hall to visit Mr. Willard, visit myself, and, you know, talk city business, and up to the very end, had a genuine interest in the city of Longview and how he could help. So, again, I want to send our regards to his family, and want to ask you to pray for the repose of the soul of Mayor Lou Galasey. We'll start tonight with our citizen comment, and I have one comment card from Stuart Russell.
I'm so not good at standing behind these podiums. I just want to walk around and talk to y'all.
Do you like to preach? Do you like to preach or just do?
I am not. I'm not good at standing here. And I did just want to get up tonight, and I don't want to steal the thunder of, I know that we had how many meetings for the mayor's task force for the animal shelter? Quite a few. And I sure don't mean to steal any thunder or in any way interfere with that. What I guess I wanted to say is, having sat through all of that, for those of you that don't know, I've been the interim director of the animal shelter. It was supposed to be for six to eight weeks. It started the last week in July, and I'm still there. Be careful what you volunteer for, is all I can say. But with that, great things have happened, and I just wanted to share that with you really quickly. The end of July, when I started, we were in the 20 percentile of things making it out the front door alive. I made one personnel change, and we jumped to 36 percent the next month. I thought, well, maybe that's just statistics. That's just the way that worked. And the next month, we went to 43 percent. October, we went to 43 percent. November, we went to 56 percent. December 2012, 78 percent of our animals left out the front door alive.
Wonderful.
That was huge for us. That is not me. That is, it's fate, it's thinking outside the box, it is a lot of really great volunteers, a lot of really great staff, and community awareness. And I think that's the one thing that having that, the mayor's shelter task force come together, and having stuff in the paper, whether it was accurate or not, was it kept it on our plates, it kept it in front of our faces, it kept people thinking about it. There is not, there's very, very few people. When I very first started there, and I would tell people, a thousand animals a month at times come into our shelter, and 75 percent of those, that means 750 carcasses leave. People were astounded. And so, I think just the truth, the honesty in doing business and being completely transparent has really helped us, and I just hope that whatever new shelter, new organization, the mythical group of people and unicorns that are going to show up and run it, however that works, I hope they start with where we are now and move forward. I don't want to start over. I want us to build on what our staff, our volunteers, and the community members are doing right now. I know probably one of the biggest things is all the negativity, and it sucked the life out of me for months. I have now figured out that all that negativity is like 10 people. All the positive stuff that goes on that shelter is in the thousands. And I know that we live in a virtual world now, with Facebook, and that stuff is, it's new to me and still somewhat Greek. We had a dog that came in with mange. We've received money from Russia, money from Germany, money from all over. That's the richest pit bull in Longview right now, let me tell you. But she has gotten outstanding care from Dr. Glaze's clinic, and that's another thing that we look on doing in the future. We plan on partnering with all of our veterinarians. And so, I'm just saying, don't reinvent the wheel when it does come time to do something. Hopefully, some of us will get to be part of whatever happens next, and we can all move forward like we've been moving forward for the last almost six months.
Good deal.
All right? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Stuart. Thank you. First presentation item, presentation discussion of the recommendations from the Animal Shelter Task Force, Dr. Ken Glaze. While Dr. Glaze is walking up here, let me say that in my wildest dream, when we started this process some three, three and a half months ago roughly, I never would have believed that any human being could bring these eight or so different factions that all had their passion and their pluses and minuses, I should say, together and come up with a recommendation. But with the leadership, the steady hand, and most importantly, the patience of Dr. Ken Glaze, we're here tonight to receive the recommendations. Dr. Glaze?
Thank you very much. Welcome, Mr. Dean and City Council members. I'm speaking for the task force, and we would like to extend our appreciation for letting us serve in this capacity to help our community. And if they would stand up, I would like to introduce all of our task force members. Myself, Mr. David Frye, Dr. Hall Griffin, Mrs. Christian Ishahara, Dr. Kenny Kimbrough, Ms. Sue Martin, Alicia Nolte, Dr. Bart Owens, Stuart Russell, and Darrell Williams. They were quite a group. And with Mr. John Sims, and I think Darrell, they were both city liaison people. Mr. Sims was quite a bit of help to us, keeping us in order. And if it wasn't for the city staff, you know, we couldn't have really put it together. Mr. Willard, David Willard, was there. Brent Brevard, the architect, helped us with a lot of figures and letting us know what actual building cost we had to look at. Mary Ann Miller kept the agendas going, kept me straight. I don't know what to say about Alicia Kidd-Brooks. She's kind of my, I don't know whether she's my other mother, my other wife. She took good care of me, made sure I had plenty of nourishment to get through these meetings.
They did feed good.
And Kevin Cummings kept us on the railroad track, kept us going in straight order, and Mitzi just kept the whole thing together. So, I would, I think it's a, my privilege to work with such a group. I think the mayor did an excellent job of putting the different kind of people together that are on this committee, and I think each one of them had individual parts of what to do and how to do it, and I think individually, they were good, and as a group, I think we came up with a workable set of recommendations that the community will be proud of, and above all, it's aimed at saving the animals. That's what we're here for. And we did, we met about once a week for approximately three months, and that sounds like a long time, 90 days, but in actuality, I think that comes to about two days and hours. And there were a lot of things that we had to deal with, and it wasn't something that we could just previously take a vote on and be done with it. It had to be thought out and worked over, and we had the opportunity with the graciousness of people like Alicia Nolte, provided airfare for a group of us to go to Chattanooga, Tennessee, at the McCamey Center, which is becoming an icon in the animal shelter world, and they were gracious enough to, I didn't get to go, but there were a group that did get to go, and they were gracious enough to show us through their facility, provide us with all the literature, every, their feasibility studies, everything. And it was, if anybody ever has a chance to go through it, I think it's really a nice place to visit, and you can see what can be done with these animal shelters. I was there with a group that went to Dallas and Carrollton, actually, we went to Louisville, Carrollton, and Irving, and they are three of the newer facilities that have been built within the last four, five years, and it was really amazing what can be done. The places that we went to, the first place we went to was Louisville, and it's the latest built, and when you first walk in that place, you know you're in a place that is well-built, well-cared-for, and that the animals in that place are happy, is a word you could use for it. There was no barking, no bad odors, there were, the lighting was good, everything was friendly, and if you were in there looking to adopt an animal, that would be the place you would want to be. And I would encourage people to go there and see those places. I was very impressed. I had a different opinion of what animal shelters, my opinion was kind of like what everybody's scope of what an animal shelter is, is a building with a lot of cages in it and some dogs needing a home. Well, these places were built with the public in mind, they had meeting rooms, they had areas for the public to come in and put on programs to help with education, and we're going to make some of those recommendations. And so, with that in mind, we decided to look at what the problems were here in East Texas, and we did find some problems, and I'm glad to hear Ms. Russell say that their adoption rate has improved, but at the time we were beginning to study this, it wasn't quite that good, and we were looking for better ways to do it, and what we found was that the current facility is taking in approximately 8,500 animals every year, and that's quite a lot for this area. And whenever you take in that many with a limited space, a limited number of cages, you end up with overcrowding, shorter holding times before animals are adopted, and when you have short times in overcrowding, disease becomes a problem, stress is a big problem, stress probably first, and then disease follows that. And then, when that happens, you have a reduction in the number of adoptions that occur, and also, you have a rise in euthanasia. And the goal here is save the animals, and euthanasia is something that we want to reduce as much as possible. So, our recommendations are, and I've got to go through these, and I may not get them in order like I should, but y'all can correct me, but the first thing that we think needs to be done is there needs to be a new facility built, period. We think it should be owned by the city of Longview and Gregg County and other municipalities that are willing to participate financially, not only with the building of the facility, but the ongoing, everyday running of the, yearly running of the buildings. I think, and when this building is built, there should be enough thought ahead to plan for the future. One of the biggest things that I noticed that when we went and talked to people, they said the first thing, the day after we opened up our new facility, we realized that we needed more space. So, that's something that needs to be thought of. And I, back on, I need to back up just a little bit. I wanted to emphasize that in the meeting that we had, we had people come from all over talk to us. Ms. Smith from Austin, that was, ran a very well-operated animal shelter in Austin, and Mr. Skip Trammell from Dallas, who a lot of people know, who's involved in several of the animal shelters in Dallas, and he was very instrumental in trying to help us as far as getting people in and programs to help adopt the animals. We, going back to my facility that we wanted to build, we recommend a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, run the day-to-day operation of the facility, and we think this 501(c) should appoint a board of directors from the surrounding area and those municipalities that want to participate financially in the development of a new animal shelter. We recommend that the guidelines for the standard of care as set forth by the Association of Shelter Veterinarians be used from the very beginning of the building to make sure that when it is built, it's built in the best manner to take care of the animals. To let you know a little bit about Association of Shelter Veterinarians, this is an ongoing project that's probably 25 years old, that is an accumulation of situations that develop the developing animal shelters, and this is what they've come up with, all kinds of guidelines, and we feel like that, you know, it's impossible to do 100%, but if we use them as a goal to work for and to look at, that when the structure is completed, we will be proud of what we've done, and at best, we'll be taking the best care of the animals. We think an operating expenses should be established and secured as soon as possible, and a search for an experienced animal shelter director should start immediately, and also be involved in the design and construction of the new shelter. Through our visiting with other people and those that have been there before us, they said the more involvement that the help had with the construction and design of these things, the better things were after they were open and going. Location is important. I think that it should be highly accessible to the traffic and easy on, easy off for people to get into and visit and be involved. And we originally voted on a 4.3 acres of land that the Humane Society generously offered up for us, and there were some that wanted other locations to be considered, so we will leave that up to the discretion of the city council as to the best place to put this. We also recommend that in the building of this facility, that architects and construction people, design people, be experienced in animal shelter design and building. Two of the places we went in Dallas, on the ceiling, there were dog prints, and these were the mascot or the sign of the contractor that built these buildings, that he specialized in building animal shelters. And there are things you don't really consider when you think about, you think about just a building that has some cages in it and holds a few animals, and people come by and say, yeah, I want that one, or, no, I'd like to have that one. These things were built in such a way that, like I said earlier, when you go into, they're friendly, the animals are presented in a wholesome manner, the lighting is best used for natural light to get in, for disease problems. Ventilation, another impressive thing to me was, these places used for a 23,000 square foot facility, and maybe smaller, they used a 50-ton air conditioning units, and the air was changed every two or three hours, complete change of, and you had no smell when you went in there. And the Louisville facility had music, they had doggy music going all the time.
Sing us one of those.
Well, I've got one. I think everybody that went on a trip has got a CD, and we play it at our clinic, and we've got a lot of comments from the animals about it.
Did they play, how much is that doggie in the window?
Yeah. I imagine there's that and others on there. But the thing that you noticed about where they did that, it was very quiet in there. The animals were at peace, so to speak. We went to another one where they didn't have that, as nice a facility as it was, a lot of barking, a lot of stress and things going on. Those kind of things, and another thing that they did at Louisville that was very impressive is there, when they cleaned cages, the mixture of the cleaning solution was done automatically, and it came through ports in the wall and went through channels, and the excrement and waste was moved down those, and it was timed as to how much it was and how much was put into there, chemicals that were mixed in with it, and it saved a lot of money. It was expensive to put in, but it saved a lot of money down the road. They had lighting in there that certain times of the day, the light sensors would turn all the lights off so it would dim, so the animals could sleep in it. So, when we say we thank somebody that's experienced in animal shelter design, that's what we're talking about, those kind of things. Another thing that I thought was really neat was, they had some of the outside, inside-outside runs, on the outside, they had exercise, some of them big as this room, some of them larger, and it was indoor-outdoor football covering, AstroTurf, and underneath the AstroTurf, they had a special layers of sand, some of them had plastic BBs underneath there, so liquids could be drained off, and the other solids could be picked up real easy, and it was very clean, it always was clean, smelled good, and the dogs got the exercise on it, and people could go out and interact with dogs. And I think that's one of the big things about all of this, if people could get a kind of a mindset that when you go to a place like that, you're not going to save some poor little animal from a demise, you're going to adopt a pet that you can enjoy and have fun with. And that's the goal of what we're all shooting for, and to reduce euthanasia. We strongly recommend that an area be provided for veterinary services and surgery. We think that one of the most important, and I think around the country, one of the most important ways to reduce euthanasia are to adopt dogs out that are vaccinated, spayed, or neutered, and microchipped, because most, excuse me, a lot of the animals at this point in time that are adopted, that have to go to a veterinary clinic or another facility to have to be neutered, only a very small portion of those people actually do that. So, if they get an animal that's already vaccinated, free of disease, they don't have to worry about it reproducing unwanted animals, when they get it, that's a lot of stress off of them, and it's not an extra expense that they have to go out and deal with. That one can't be, as far as the veterinarians are concerned, you can't stress that one too hard. We think this facility, after a lot of figuring, and I have to commend Kristin Ishahara, she took all the facts that we all threw at her, and everybody was screaming about, and put all this together, and came back with some readable, understandable figures that made sense, and, thank you, Kristin. For the problems that exist here in East Texas, we think that a facility of approximately 28,000 square feet would, and could house 260 animals, you can divide that into dog and cats, however it's necessary, 50/50 is not quite what it should be. And in so doing and building that, there should be future plans for expansion, plan down the road for what the intake's going to be five years from now. The McCamey Center, as being as nice a place as it is, has its problems too, and as new as they are and all the things they did right, it's still coming back to them that they've got problems they got to deal with. One of the things that I was told, I talked to a lady named Dr. Hall, who works for one of the drug pharmaceutical companies, and her specialty is animal shelter, helping animal shelters and providing for them, and she said, you're not going to be liked, but you're going to have to go up there and tell them what they need, and how much it's going to cost, and get that cost secured before you even put a shovel in the ground. So, that's something that needs to be thought about. I'll pass that on. And all these other programs, and with the new facility, we think that there should be some programs budgeted for and implemented in the way of, such as trapping, neutering, and releasing of feral cats. We've found that in areas that do that, the overtime that will eliminate a lot of unwanted cats in the area.
Hey, Doc?
Yes, sir.
Remember what Chattanooga said, also gets rid of a bunch of rats, unwanted rats, with those feral cats?
Yeah.
They discussed where, like in malls, that they turned those feral cats back loose. They said the rodent population went down tremendously.
Yeah, there's, you know, there's benefits. At first, you think, boy, I don't really want, that doesn't sound too good, but it does have its advantages, and it probably, it saves the city a lot of money on pest control.
Oh, yeah.
They have programs, educational programs should be implemented. These places that we went to had rooms, some of them big as this room, where they were open to the public for them to have meetings and groups come in and put on programs and let people interact with the animals and interact with other people that deal in the animal shelter world. Volunteer, I think Russell expanded upon, a volunteer coordinator. There are people calling me all since they found out what we were doing, they're all, they're calling me daily and saying, I've got a group, and we want to volunteer. And a lot of my older clients that maybe have retired, they want to go help. So, that's something that can be worked on and improved, and I think that could be a real benefit to a new facility. And they need to adopt plans to every year to improve the save rate of the animals that we're dealing with. Our whole goal is to save the animals, and there'll always be new ways and things to implement that. And as an overall... And as an overall support for all of this endeavor, the task force recommends the following resolution, or similar wording, be adopted for each participating government municipality, and as follows. "We are committed to the human treatment of animals in our community. We resolve to provide adequate facility for the unwanted pets in our community and also to save as many of those pets as possible through private partnerships and the institution of new programs and educational programs. We would ask that the City of Longview, the Longview City Council and surrounding municipalities of Gregg County, Texas, consider and adopt our proposed recommendations. In conclusion, we wanna thank you for the opportunity to serve in this capacity and look forward to working with you to make our community a better place." And I would like to say, as an individual, I had a lot of reservations about doing this, but it was an enjoyable experience. I learned a lot, I enjoyed the people that I worked with, I think we complimented everybody, and I think the community should be proud of this committee. Thank you.
Dr. Glaze, thank you very much. And again, let me reiterate, we are very thankful and proud of the job that you did, along with the rest of the task force. Like I said, I would've taken odds that we couldn't have gotten this many different factions together under one roof. We tried that a couple of times and turned into a catfight, remember? But we...
It took a while to get things straight.
Sure, sure, but you did a great job, and I thank the entire task force. Before you sit down, let me see if there's any questions. Mr. Frost?
How did you come up with the number, 260 animals?
Ms. Ishihara came up with that. We came up with what the shelter is doing approximately now, and how many animals we expected to be dealing with, and the cost of each animal per dog, and that's kind of where we came up with the, with that number. And that was one of the things that took us such a long time, was trying to come up with this particular figure. Because we didn't, we weren't sure, we went to other places, and I've got some information here, we went to a lot of other places and we got the information, the square footage that they had, the number of animals that they took in, the annual intake, and the cost per animal, the cost of square foot per animal. So basically, we looked at the number of animals, the cost of the square footage that it would take to do it, and then figured out how many feet it would take to run that...
We've had numbers, a thousand per month?
Mm-hmm. I think it averages seven to a thousand.
But one of the thoughts, Mr. Frost, is that, you know, with, through the adoption program, is that we're not gonna have to house the animals for near as long, and just what Stuart said tonight, if their adoption right now is up to 78%, then those animals aren't staying there long. So the turnover hopefully will be much quicker.
A new facility will help that, and the, the way I understand it is, the short holding dates end up in more euthanasia. If animals can be, if there can be an average time held, a longer time, it's a better chance for them, people to see them, people, for them to be adopted. So it may be a little contrary to what we said, but the space is the problem. And so we added as much space as we thought we could, that each animal be in a separate cage. That's part of the standard of care of the veterinarians. Holding days, we, she made a list of holding days for different cities and counties, and like Irving was one of the places that we went to, and they didn't put it down here, but some places it averaged five and six days. It's three days here. And that, I think that, from what Russell was telling me, that's getting better.
Do you have provision for temporary overflow or a thing like that, maybe? Did some of them have an overflow place?
No, that's the problem. That's what they said, the day we opened up, we didn't have enough room. So that, and I think that's one of the things that we, and people that came, Ms. Smith came from Austin, one of the things she said, you know, "Make it big enough, plan ahead, you don't wanna be back in this situation five years from now."
Right.
And you really could be.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen?
Can you explain that where we got that number better than I did?
I think we're good.
That's fine.
Yeah, we're good. Ms. Allen, you had something?
Yes, sir, thank you very much, Dr. Glaze. In the facilities that you visited, I know you said you didn't go to Tennessee, but the other group, your group did, and then at Lewisville, the others, is there kind of a workable floor plan that seems to work out in these, and that you could put together from all these different plants that you visited?
Each one of those places offered us their floor plan. The Humane Society here has several floor plans.
Okay.
I think Mr. Brevard came up with a floor plan. He'd already had one. You know, you can get a lot of floor plans, and I think that kind of goes back to dealing with those people that have made their mistakes, you know, "Oh, don't do this, don't do that." One of the main things that I thought about was, that I thought was a need improvement, was going in one side of a cat cage, and the cages were all lined up against the wall on that side, and glass on the other side where people could see them, and then there was about a six-foot space, and then this whole wall was glass to the outside, and the sunlight was, and shining in on those. Sunlight is a big deterrent of disease. And so, you know, making a design where that can be utilized, temperature, you know, fresh air, ventilation probably is the second most or important thing in any kind of animal facility. I always tell this story, and I probably shouldn't, but when I was doing some horse practice, I talked to a veterinarian that, we were dealing with a bunch of sick horses in Chicago, and he told me that, and I was, they all had the flu, and I asked him, "What the problem?" And he said, "They keep those barn doors shut at night." And he said, "If a horse's water bug, it doesn't freeze at night, they're not getting enough air." So I always keep that in mind, that a lot of air circulating in the right direction and changing that air, where the air doesn't just move around, and you can't put a fan in there and let air move around in the same room. That was these, these air conditioners were made here in Longview, Aaron Company, had both of the, where we went, both of those 50,000-pound units, and they were going all the time. But it really was pleasant to go through those places.
Did you find any architect, contractor, so to speak, over in the Dallas area that was common to several different places that you...
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Lewisville and Carrollton, Carrollton, were, had the same architect.
Okay.
They just wanted to have the footprint on.
Well, one of the things, and Dr. Glaze mentioned it, everywhere that the task force has been, and in Chattanooga, has offered to help us with, you know, do this but don't do that kind of thing. So it's gonna be a real meticulous process. I think we're fortunate that we do have an architect on staff, that as the recommendation is asked, that we look into a company that's in the business of designing and constructing, and so we'll get off into that pretty deep here.
The ones from Dallas offered their services too.
Okay. Any other questions, Dr. Glaze? Dr. Glaze, thank you for a great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And thanks to Mr. Sims for being the liaison for the council on this task force. I'm sure he brought some...
It wound up being a lot of fun. The first two or three meetings were a little contentious, and...
I'm sure you brought that to an end.
Oh, I did bring it, yes. I run my mouth quite a bit too, but Dr. Glaze looked over it, so...
There you go. Well, council, what we're looking at tonight, you've got a copy of the recommendations. What I think's important for you to do now is to look at this, review it, ask questions. You've got Kevin and Mary Ann, you've got the entire staff, any questions you have. I think what we should consider is having a work session that's strictly about this particular issue. I would recommend we do that within the next two weeks, okay? Maybe in between the two council meetings, okay? And in a work session, we can come any day of the week that's good for council, we can come any time of day that's good for council, but it's strictly a work session to come in and to start peeling each layer of this particular recommendation down, and coming up with the answers that we need to make this become a reality. So I'll ask Mary Ann to put some proposed dates together in this timeframe, contact each council member, look at your schedules and see what might work for you, and then we'll get the information back to Mary Ann and schedule a meeting from there. Is that okay with everybody?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Let's move to the next presentation. Presentation of the Annual Report on the City of Longview Workforce Diversity. Thanks to the task force for coming tonight, too. Oh, she said she wanted to...
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Willard. Tonight, I'm pleased to bring you the second annual report of our workforce diversity plan. Can't believe we're in year three now, but I wanted to bring forward just a short presentation about our accomplishments this year and where we are statistic, statistically wise. And just a reminder that the purpose of this plan, of course, is to be a guiding document. It can always be found on the city's website. It was created in December of 2010, and the annual update from last year should be online, and this one will also be added as well. This document facilitates the hiring, development, and promotion of a qualified and diverse workforce, and it promotes and develops an inclusive, respectful work environment. So it is a fluid and working document, it's subject to changing conditions and that sort of thing. And when we talk about the term diversity, I always like to just remind everybody that it is not intended to be completely synonymous with the term minority, as it's used when we're referring to protected groups under the Equal Opportunity Commission, but when we're speaking about it in our document, it does encompass those innate characteristics, but it also encompasses the acquired characteristics that we bring to the job, such as our experiences, maybe our religion, or just our culture, the way that we were brought up, and that sort of thing. This plan's not intended to promote or demote any group or characteristic over another, but it's rather to help the organization examine how differences within the workplace will be beneficial. So with those just opening words, one quick thing that I want to remind you about is that we do divide up our city positions, just to make this a manageable process, by using the federal equal employment opportunity job categories. They're listed on the screen for you, and what we do is measure ourselves against the available Gregg County workforce that is also divided into these categories, just to kind of give us a measuring stick and to help us prioritize on where we need to work with our recruitment and hiring. We are going to, tonight, just focus on the first four categories, because according to the stats, that's where we really need to be focusing on. So tonight, I'll just be looking at that, but please keep in mind that the report and will have a lot more detail that will be found online, and also you can always contact me if you'd like the additional stats. I would like to move now to just looking first at the employee staffing as a whole, and then we'll kind of look at the hiring stats and go from there. But this gives you a trend over the last three years, from '09-10 fiscal year, '10-11 fiscal year, '11-12, starting from left to right. It shows you in this first table, the race for our officials and administrators, the race composition of the individuals who hold positions here. These are your managers and directors primarily. And the little green line that runs through that is just our guiding principle, these are, it just helps us prioritize. Of course, we want to, if we can, be up along with that red bar, equal to the Gregg County workforce, but our 80% rule of thumb is running, is that green line there. So you can see, you know, in '09-10, we were looking a little more favorable than we are now, we dropped last year, but are edging back up in this category. So it was a small positive improvement. The next table is dealing with the females within that same category, and as you can see, we're doing very well there. The professionals category for race, I have for you as well. You can see that we've made some really pretty good improvement. Keep in mind, the pools of employees that are in these two categories are much smaller than you'll find in our maintenance group and our skilled labor and protective services group, but it's still a good positive trend. And then for females, we edged up slightly in that regard, so we need to be working in our professional series for females. The next slide, real quick, has to do with the technician series, race, where we have not really made any improvements there. These are positions that are more specialized in nature. You'll find some of our dispatch positions, our GIS, some IT positions are in this field as well. So this is one that we're definitely targeting. And the females as well, we're below where we would like to be. Protective services was pretty well, even across the board, across those three years with our race composition for minority races. And then for females, we're looking pretty good with our females. Before we get into the hiring stats, I really wanted to just give you some recruiting accomplishments that we have accomplished this year. We had a really successful year with our city career fair, some of you guys, I think, attended. What we did this year was actually divided up into two different segments. The morning session was for employees, and what it did was, it allowed them the opportunity to see what other career paths are available within the city. So if we have somebody in a lower-level maintenance position that would like to see, maybe they're interested in a position with the police department or in water purification, it gave them the opportunity to go and see what that job was like. Here's a picture of some people from our traffic department. Keith Covington is showing Craig Crawford, who works in our fleet services department, a little bit about the traffic. And so it just gave them that opportunity to see what's out there, and if I need to get a certain education or some certificates, what can I do using the tuition reimbursement program to better myself and move up within the organization? So the morning was spent doing that, and then we opened it up to the public in the afternoon and showcased all of the departments, they brought in all of their equipment, they had a great time showing the public what we did, but it was also a job fair as well. And we were able to, you know, present our job opportunities and things then, so it was very successful. We have, I just have a list there of local job fairs that we attended, the police department and fire department attend with us on a regular basis, most of these job fairs. We went to the multicultural fair again this year, we're usually a regular attendee there and are trying to recruit from there as well. The fire recruitment, I wanted to just highlight just a few things, because you know, we really have been focusing the last couple of years a lot on fire department, and trying to bring up their statistics a little bit, and getting people involved or interested in careers in the fire service. And this year, they created this new program for the summer in partnership with Partners in Prevention, it was called a HOC camp, and it was, it stands for Heroes of Tomorrow. And it lasted for three different Saturdays over the summer, and they had a total of 15 participants, and it just happened that all of them were of a race minority, and they had a couple of females, I want to, they had three females as well, that were participating in this program, so it was very successful. Here's a picture of some of the kids working with somebody on a gurney. I know they made it out on one of the local lakes and one of the fire department boats and things, and so it was very successful. I'm sure they'll be doing it again this summer. They also have a fire explorer program, and they have 11 participants right now, and three of those are females. So that's going along very well. And then the fire apprenticeship program, which you all approved several years ago, I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. I believe that currently they have 12 enrolled in the program, and five of them have just recently completed their paramedic, and so they'll be getting out into the field training program within the next month or two. They recently hired one person who was a minority, and then one female as well. So that program is on target and really helping us build up our fire department staffing before they actually lose people to retirements and things. One other area that I'd like to mention is the Pine Tree ISD Career Technology Program. Chief Steelman's a member of the board of this program, I don't know if you all are familiar with it, but it's excellent in that it's, is focusing on vocational programs in the high school juniors and seniors, and he's really researching the possibility of adding a fire career or possibly an emergency medical career practicum into their existing program. medical career practicum into their existing program. So it would be at the junior and senior high level and hopefully garner interest in the fire service from that point. So he's very excited about that as well. Can't leave out the police department. I wanted to highlight their recruitment as well, and they have been very active, attending additional job fairs on top of what you've already seen. They've been across the state and then more regional as well, heading Wiley College, UT, Tyler, Tyler Junior College, Sam Houston. They also have all of their recruitment notices in several police academies around the state. And then they also have a very active police explorer program. And they currently have 15 explorers. The group is very diverse. They get to ride along with the officers. They get to actually have training in all aspects of law enforcement, including arrests, search and seizure, which I'm sure goes over very well with them. And they have to be at least 14 years of age and have completed the eighth grade to participate. And they meet about twice a month, so if anybody's interested, and you know of somebody, you can ask them to contact the police department. It's a very active program. So those are our recruiting efforts. And as you can see from this next slide, that we really have done well receiving applications from especially minorities who are qualified. They've met the minimum qualifications of the job. If you look at the table, the percent of the minorities who submitted an application is in the green, and in the blue will be the Gregg County minority workforce. And in every case, we have exceeded that ratio, except for in protective services, which is just running right on target with the workforce in Gregg County for protective services. So they're doing really well on the recruitment side. Now let's kind of hop over and let's talk about the hiring process real quick. I'm not going to bore you with a lot of statistics. Last time, I really gave you a lot, we dived down pretty deep in how we handled the hiring process. But I wanted to let you know that we are still...